It's funny you say that, Tom, because Kevin was saying that's what the Circleville Council just starts with that, every meeting, so.
Okay. I can call this a legislative meeting of Chillicothe City Council to order. Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Trutschel.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Showman.
Here.
Prohl.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Ames.
Here.
Okay. We're in order. I'd like to ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, your minutes were both in your packet and filed electronically by our clerk. So they didn't really like them. Mr. Prohl?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Secured by Mrs. Neal. Roll call to accept the journal minutes.
Trutschel.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Reports of committees. Mr. Chapman?
Yes, Engineering Committee doesn't have anything on the agenda tonight, but, by the way, thank you, President. We don't have anything on the agenda tonight, but I would like to bring up the fact that it was six weeks ago I made a proposal for a 2.2 percent tax raise funds for maintaining streets on a continual basis, and we still don't have an assignment to the committee to consider going to the voters with this. If you paid attention to the last Tuesday's election, certain will pass the tax, two townships pass the tax, that will cover maintenance of streets, and I think the township's streets and bridges. So we need to get this forward because we don't have a lot of time if we want to get it on the agenda, but we've got to, the council has to approve it before we go to the board of elections. Grant money is available, but the problem is we don't have a grant roster, and also they're not guaranteed, but there is grant money in there, but the grant is not going to be a permanent fix, so the only way to get a permanent fix is to try to go to the voters and see if they want to accept a small tax. I don't want to pay tax, you guys don't want to pay tax, but I'm willing to pay my share to get the streets back to where they should be. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. You know, I wanted to note that there is a corrupt finance committee assignment related to streets. We'll see what they come up with and move forward. Okay. Thank you. Tom, it's been. Okay. I stand corrected. President Reinhardt?
Yes.
Are you referring to that one for eighty-seven thousand dollars?
No, this is a request to, for the Finance Committee to score funding options for streets.
Okay, thank you. Also, may I have your forgiveness? We do have one item.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, absolutely. Take the floor again, Dave. I'm wanting to look up that number for Tom.
I didn't want to play, Mr. Prohl, but I'd like to mention that I lied on Watch Street. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other report? Tom, I'll look that up here. And Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. Development has widened on Linda tonight. It's item number two of the second reading of his resolution to accept the annual report for Chillicothe reinvestments to various camps in Senate and Dean Council, and this is an annual report that we approve by council as always during the three days of each year, and it's the second reading.
Mr. Prohl?
Safety Services has one item on tonight's agenda. That is item number three, which is a first reading. It is to transfer $6,778.58 to Uppit, the cruisers for the police department, because this is just simply moving money so that we can pay for these approved changes. I'm going to ask at the appropriate time that we waive the re-read rule, and lose my support. Thank you.
Any other reports of committees? Mrs. Neal?
City Services has no items on the agenda, but I want to point a report on two assignments. The first one is assignment 1461. It was a request for legislation to appropriate $3,143.36 to purchase a sweeper gutter brush attachment, and this is, it's an attachment that goes with our Bob cap that we currently have in the City Services. The purpose of this attachment is to get the grit up off of the streets and the gutters that does it more efficiently and quicker, so the committee agreed that that would be a good purchase. Legislation to appropriate funds is currently in the Law Director's office. The second assignment, number 1462, is request for legislation to appropriate $56,808 to purchase a Duraco Dura Patcher. And during our meeting, Mike Green talked about the benefits of this. They've seen it demonstrated. It produces a better result than what we're doing now. It's quicker, saves labor, but the committee had a lot of questions about cost estimates for the tank that's required, some other components that weren't considered in the initial quote, so we've asked for more information about that, and we're waiting for Mr. Green to get that together. Another option was perhaps the mayor and Mike Green were going to talk to Circleville and see if maybe it is something we could share or lease something. I just want to make one comment according to, or about Dave's comments about the streets and our need for a tax levy. I was at the shop and stroll, I think it was two weekends ago, and I was doing some business along Water Street, and as I was walking, jaywalking across the street.
Don't say that too loud.
It occurred to me that we have either got paved Water Street or we've got to turn it back into a canal, but that's our, those are our choices, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Neal. Any other reports of committees? Mr. Trutschel?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. Our court that.
Here, I thought it was original.
As regards to the five-dollar license, we had a meeting back in January, and we determined that the cost is raised by $100,000 a year, which is, we have to go through and deal that, and also, we determined then that the only thing on the ballot that causes a lot of money, more than half the ballot did on the ballot, and more or less died there. We had left Dr. working about it. I really don't know where it's at, but that's where I did have a meeting about it and had a discussion about it. If we want to go ahead with it, I don't think I'd like to, and I don't know that five-dollar fee is enough, but, I mean, they've had fifty-dollar fee, and they've more than one, and that's shop guards, you know, but five-dollar fee, I'm confused.
Tom, the Finance Committee assignment to look at funding for streets is 1427, and I'll pull the, I'll pull that information back out, and, yeah, it's been a, I don't have the date in front of me on that. I don't have it behind me here, but if, I have a, I have a kind of a running list. It's 1427, and I'll be more than happy to drop the hard copies again off to you. No problem. Any other reports of committees? Neal? Perfect. Ms. Gray?
Thank you, President. Reinhardt. The Human Resources Committee does not have any items on the agenda this evening, but I would like to report out on legislation requests received, 1442, as well as 1444 and 1465. I'm working with the Law Director's office to be able to get those created and to counsel as quickly as possible. I think the last legislation request with regard to 1465 is what, including for loop, with regard to pulling it out and making it three pieces of legislation as opposed to the one that was requested initially. We had to make that into these two schedules as well as an appropriation, so that, with them being short-staffed last week, it kind of put things forward, so I hope to have it for the next council, if not before then, and maybe ask a request for a special.
Absolutely. Just let us know, with the mayor's office knowing you can call it. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gray? Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you, President Reinhardt.
Any other reports of committees? Okay, moving on. Reports of officials. Mayor Everson?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. First, I'd like to address a couple issues. Dave, with regard to the legislation for tax, if you could send me something in writing, I'll start that process through the appropriate channels with the council, request for legislation. You send me an email with your proposal, and I'll transfer that to a question for legislation.
I sent an email already to Mr. Reinhardt, but, you know, I have to go ahead.
Yeah, like I said, there's an active committee assignment to the Finance Committee. I will get that, make sure Tom has the information, let the Finance Committee move forward, and if it's not sufficient, we can go from there. Okay. I basically didn't want to jump over the Finance Committee on that. Dave, it's, I was, thank you.
Another thing with regard to that comment on Water Street, that is an active project for the summer, so we'll see what evils are under the street and why it's caving and get that correct. This leads me to my first item. We had the South Bridge Street and Eastern Avenue project go out for bid last week. The bids were received on Wednesday, and, no, Thursday, I'm sorry, and although the projected asphalt work came in under bid, we did put a condition on that, as you recall with Tom Day's discussion last council meeting on doing it right, where it wasn't done right in 2000, and both Bridge Street and Eastern Avenue have a concrete base that was originally a concrete road, and there's expansion joints in concrete roads to allow for movement. When you put asphalt on the top of that, any movement in those expansion joints results in caving and fracturing of the asphalt above, and that's why there's so many bumps going down South Bridge Street in particular, particularly with the heavy semi-traffic on that, and the corner on Bridge Street to Eastern Avenue is, and that's because of the torque of the heavy trucks making the turns on that road. So although the footboard asphalt came in under budget, the corrective work of those expansion joints under the street, which require extra work, came in over bid. I received an email today from Tom Day saying that that's going to require an additional $37,000 in, to make that right. So what he's requesting, and the committee assignment was made today and given to President Reinhardt, is a council request for an additional $37,000, which will come out of the street repair and maintenance account that has approximately $70,000 in it right now. We have enough money to do that, but in order to do the project right, it's going to require additional contribution on the city's side, so that's a committee assignment now. ODOT is asking for a verbal authorization on that by Wednesday of this week. They never give us any time to really ball these things over, so with the council request to the Engineering Committee, and assume, we're going to need some quick action on that to appropriate those bumps. On a more pleasant note, I've been working with the county this past month. A new initiative by the state is to align a partnership between the county commissioners and city mayors of chip grants. We have two forms of grants in the city. One is administered by Dale Hartle's group out of the, out of the community development, Office of Community Development. Dale Hartle is the consultant with that group. They handle the chip grants, and then Mike Sequoy handles the community block grants for the city. Millie, the employee in the city office in 35 South Paint Street, is, she does the coordination of those, but by joining in a partnership this year, the state is up the ante for receipt of state funds to help with rehabilitation assistance, repair assistance, home ownership assistance, and fair housing grants. Typically, the city applies for, and is normally awarded, $350,000. The county typically applies for $400,000. By forming this partnership, it is up to $50,000 each, so the city's receipts on this, if the grant is awarded, is $400,000, and the county is $450,000. One of the best aspects of this is the county has agreed to do all the administrative work for these grants, which reduces the amount of administrative investment by the city, and it's a very cooperative agreement. It's a win-win for the city and county with increased reward of grant, and it's a reduced liability on the city for administrative help. I've passed out copies of that agreement. It hasn't been signed. This is the application for the grant funds. This isn't anything that has to do with the award. The state makes that determination, but the, I think the general positives of this is a good thing for the city and the county because you get additional funds on that. You have a copy of that agreement in front of you. The Law Director has reviewed this. The county prosecutor has reviewed this. Changes that they were concerned with have been made, and it's an agreement by the county commissioners and my office, so I just wanted to let you know that that was something in the works, and we might need more money for the city to help people with repair needs. One thing, this is homeowner grants, it's not landlord grants. Also, we continue our support for Habitat of Humanity, $22,000. Recall, last year, we applied for that, received that, and gave them aid to help build homes for people that couldn't afford homes. So this was good work for the city, and it best serves the homeowners of both parties. Any questions on that? If you have any questions after you review the document, just give me a call at my office. I'd be happy to answer any of that. Next item on the list, Councilwoman Patrick, last week, passed out some information on a program called Adina Care, something that I've been looking at and working with the management group out of Adina. Last Thursday, John Saxton and several other members of the community and I went down to a managed care facility in Adina, they're at, of Adina and Waverly, and toured that facility, and this is something that, we talk about wellness programs in the city all the time. The insurance committee is engaged every year in our selection of a health care provider. This does not replace the health care provider, but it's an added feature into managing our health care. The steer employees toward a coordinated doctor's appointment to minimize the costs instead of making trips to the emergency rooms. It's just a more informed way for employees in the city that have the city health insurance to utilize those funds in the best way possible. Less payout we have, less experience that we have, better opportunity we have to negotiate lower rate of insurance companies. I think with the Affordable Health Care Act going into application this year for group plans, which we fall under everything we can do to maximize our dollars, and health care overall helps the city and helps us lower expenses, and the best part of it is, is hopefully we get healthier employees with better managed health care and preventative action towards health issues rather than wait for emergencies to come up and have the highest costs involved in that. So we'll have more information coming out on that. There are several city entities that are involved in that. Horizon, Blatford, Petland, Kenworth, and Chillicothe City Schools now are exploring this option to help reduce their health care costs, so it might be a good avenue for us to manage our costs in the health care arena of about $3.8 million in premiums a year is a substantial expense for the city. So more on that as it develops. Last thing I have is a reminder that financial disclosure statements are due this Thursday, the fifteenth. Not a good idea to miss the deadline on those, so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Everson.
Senator Beatty? Thank you, President Reinhardt. Just to touch on a couple of those reports of committees, following up on what Councilman Trutschel was mentioning about that Finance Committee meeting, I concur with his assessment. I think we looked at it, said $100,000 just wouldn't bill very far, and I think, I think that the assignment, committee assignment request was specifically a five-dollar addition. That law or ability to tack on fees is in increments of five for max of $20,000, and basically what we said was $100,000, $200,000, $300,000, $400,000. I think we said that once we got up to maybe $400,000, that might give us some viability as far as committing that money to funding long-term as far as borrowing, because when you have a dedicated stream like that, you can, you can borrow against it, and the reminder then is that it takes a long time for this money, that the fees to ever get tacked on. I think the deadline would be either July 1 or August 1, something like that, this summer, for the fees to begin to be assessed, January 1 of 2016, so it's an 18-month lead time, and so, just sort of a follow-up on that report. Councilman Prohl's assignment, the transfer, the transfer of the money is going from police operating fund, the fuel, into, into safety lady capital. That's why we need council's approval there. It will reduce the police department's operating availability, but they do need those cruisers, which I just want to explain, you know, until we look deeper into that assignment. And then, just finally, I want to report on a meeting that we had here, it's kind of a little roundtable, last Monday. It was attended by Mayor, Councilman Ames, Councilman Bonner, as well as probably 10 to 15 cities represented, all the way as far north as Cleveland, Galapolis, we had just about, well, not all four corners, but we had a good representation. Senator, State Senator Bob Peterson was here, and the topic of conversation was the House Bill, which has now moved to the Senate, which this body passed a revolution.
Revolution.
Resolution. We had a revolution, and then we passed a resolution opposing last year, and so when it went from the House to the Senate, there were some, some quick dealings that sort of actually made it worse than what we opposed, and so now the Senate is considering it. I think the upside is that the Senate is, we might have a better opportunity in the Senate for some considerations that maybe would hurt the city as bad, but I think with the representation that we had here, it was very clear that, yes, some, some fixes are needed, but because different cities all apply tax law so differently, an across-the-board fix could really, really adversely affect Chillicothe, so I encourage this body and the citizens of Chillicothe to pay really close attention to this, because it's the type of thing that frankly, tax law and reform are just not that exciting to pay attention to, but this is something that would be right in line with all these other cuts we've had, and, you know, one of the things we asked is, hey, you know, if this is necessary, if you have necessary, can you give us something to offset some of the pain? And I think Senator Bob Peterson was, I think, was thoughtful to, he asked a few questions, but I think he was thoughtful. My, my, you know, a couple of people, people, you know, I think that was really effective to, it's not a lot of people, but I, I, I was thinking about that.
[inaudible]
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 Tom, the Finance Committee assignment to look at funding for streets is 1427. And I'll pull the, I'll pull that information back out and, yeah. It's been a, I don't have the date in front of me on that. I don't have it by binder here, but if, I have a li, I have a kind of a running list. It's 1427. I'll be more than happy to drop the hard copies again off to you.
No problem.
Any other reports of committees? Neil? Or, Ms. Gray?
Thank you, President. Reinhart. The Human Resources Committee does not have any items on agenda this evening, but I would like to report out on legislation requests received. 1442, as well as 1444 and 1465 are, I'm working with the Law Director's Office to be able to get those created and to counsel as quickly as possible. I think the last legislation request with regard to 1465 is what, 340, with regard to pulling it out and making it three pieces of legislation as opposed to the one that was requested initially. We had to make that in two schedules, as well as appropriation. So, that, with them being short staffed last week, it kind of brings things forward. So, I hope to have it for the next council, if not before then, and maybe ask a request for a special...
Absolutely. Just let us know with Mayor's Office now, and you can call it. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gray? Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you, President. Reinhart.
Any other reports of committees? Okay, moving on. Reports of officials. Mayor Everson.
Thank you, President Reinhart. First, I'd like to address a couple of issues. Dave, with regard to the legislation for tax, if you could send me something in writing, I'll start that process through the appropriate channels with the council and request for legislation. You send me an email with your proposal, and I'll transfer that to a request for legislation.
I sent a email already to you, Mr. Reinhart, but you don't have to go ahead.
Yeah, like I said, there's an active committee assignment, the Finance Committee. I will get that, make sure Tom has the information of Finance Committee. Move forward, and if it's not sufficient, we can go from there. I basically didn't want to jump over the Finance Committee on that date.
Right.
Thank you.
Another thing with regard to that comment on Water Street, that is an active project for the summer. So, we'll see what evils are under the street and why it's caving and get that correct. This leads me to my first item. We had the South Bridge Street and Eastern Avenue project go out for bid last week. The bids were received on Wednesday and, no, Thursday, I'm sorry. And although the projected asphalt work came in under bid, we did put a condition on that, as you recall with Tom Day's discussion last council meeting on doing it right where it wasn't done right in 2000. And both Bridge Street and Eastern Avenue have a concrete base that was originally a concrete road. And there's expansion joints in concrete roads to allow for movement. When you put asphalt on the top of that, any movement in those expansion joints results in caving and fracturing of the asphalt above. And that's why there's so many bumps going down South Bridge Street in particular, particularly with the heavy semi-traffic on that. And the corner on Bridge Street to Eastern Avenue is a mess because of the torque of the heavy trucks making the turns on that road. So, although the quote for asphalt came in under budget, the corrective work of those expansion joints under the street, which require extra work, came in over bid. And I received an email today from Tom Day saying that that's going to require an additional $37,000 in to make that right. So, what he's requesting, and the committee assignment was made today and given to President Reinhart, is a council request for additional $37,000, which will come out of the street repair maintenance account that has approximately $70,000 in it right now. We have enough money to do that, but in order to do the project right, it's going to require additional competition on the city's side. So, that's a committee assignment now. ODOT is asking for a verbal authorization on that by Wednesday of this week. They never give us any time to really ball these things over. So, with the council request to the Engineering Committee, I assume we're going to need some quick action on that to appropriate those funds. On a more pleasant note, I've been working with the county this past month. A new initiative by the state is to align a partnership between the county commissioners and city mayors of chip grants. We have two forms of grants in the city. One is administered by Dale Hartle's group out of the, out of the Community Development, Office of Community Development. Dale Hartle is the consultant with that group. They handle the chip grants. And then Mike Sequoy handles the community block grants for the city. Millie, the employee in the city office in 35 South Paint Street is, she does the coordination of those. But by joining in a partnership this year, the state is up the ante for receipt of state funds to help with rehabilitation assistance, repair assistance, homeownership assistance, and fair housing grants. Typically, the city applies for, has normally awarded $350,000. The county typically applies for $400,000. By forming this partnership, it is up $50,000 each. So, the city's receipts on this, if the grant is awarded, is $400,000, and the county is $450,000. One of the best aspects of this is the county has agreed to do all the administrative work for these grants, which reduces the amount of administrative investment by the city. And it's a very cooperative agreement. It's a win-win for the city and county with increased reward of grant, and it's a reduced liability on the city for administrative help. I've passed out copies of that agreement. It has been signed. This is the application for the grant funds. This isn't anything that has to do with the award. The state makes that determination. But the, I think the general positives of this is a good thing for the city and the county because you get additional funds on that. And you have a copy of that agreement in front of you. The Law Director has reviewed this. The county prosecutor has reviewed this. Changes that they were concerned with have been made, and it's an agreement by the county commissioners and law office. So, I just wanted to let you know that that was something in the works, and might need more money for the city to help people with repair needs. One thing, this is homeowner grants, it's not landlord grants. Also, we continue our support for Habitat of Humanity, $22,000. Recall, last year, we applied for that, received that, and gave them aid to help build homes for people that couldn't afford homes. So, this was good work for the city, and it best serves the homeowners of both parties. Any questions on that? If you have any questions after you review the document, just give me a call at my office. I'd be happy to answer any of them. Next item on the list, Councilwoman Patrick, last week, passed out some information on a program called Adina Care, something that I've been looking at and working with the management group out of Adina. Last Thursday, John Saxton and several other members of the community and I went down to a managed care facility in Adina, there at, of Adina and Waverly, and toured that facility. And this is something that, we talk about wellness programs in the city all the time. The insurance committee is engaged every year in our selection of a health care provider. This does not replace the health care provider, but it's an added feature into managing our health care, to steer employees toward a coordinated doctor's appointment to minimize the costs instead of making trips through the emergency rooms. It's just a more informed way for employees in the city that have the city health insurance to utilize those funds in the best way possible. Less payout we have, less experience that we have, better opportunity. We have to negotiate a lower rate of insurance coverage. I think with the Affordable Health Care Act going into application this year for group plans, which we fall under, everything we can do to maximize our, our dollars in health care overall helps the city and helps us lower expenses. And the best part of it is, is hopefully we get healthier employees with better managed health care and preventative action towards health issues rather than wait for emergencies to come up and have the highest costs involved in that. So, we'll have more information coming out on that. There are several city entities that are involved in that. Horizon, Flatbel, Petland, Kenworth, and Chillicothe City Schools now are exploring this option to help reduce their health care costs. So, it might be a good avenue for us to manage our costs in the health care arena of about $3.8 million in premiums a year, which is substantial expense for the city. So, more on that as it develops. Last thing I have is a reminder that financial disclosure statements are due this Thursday the 15th. Not a good idea to mess the deadline on those stuff. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Everson. Hunter Beatty? Thank you, President Reinhart. Just to touch on a couple of those reports of committees, following up on what Councilman Churchill was mentioning about that Finance Committee meeting, I concur with his assessment. I think we looked at it, said $100,000 just wouldn't go very far. And I think, I think that the assignment, committee assignment request was specifically a five-dollar addition. That law or ability to tack on fees is in increments of five for max of $20. Basically, we said it was $100, $200, $300, $400,000. I think we said that once we got up to maybe $400,000, that might give us some viability as far as committing that money to funding long-term as far as borrowing. Because when you have a dedicated stream like that, you can, you can borrow against it. And the reminder then is that it takes a long time for this money to, fees to ever get tacked on. I think the deadline would be either July 1 or August 1, something like that, this summer, for the fees to begin to be assessed January 1 of 2016. So, it's an 18-month lead time. And so, that, just, just sort of a following up on that report. Councilman Pearl's assignment, the transfer, the transfer of the money is going from police operating fund, the fuel, into, into Safety Lady Capital. That's why we need council's approval there. That will reduce the police department's operating availability, but they do need those crews, which I just want to explain, go into a little bit deeper into that assignment. And then, just finally, I want to report on a meeting that we had here, it's kind of a little roundtable, last Monday. It was attended by Mayor, Councilwoman Ames, Councilman Bonner, as well as probably 10 to 15 cities represented, all the way as far north as Cleveland, Galapagos. We had just about, well, not all four corners, but we had a good representation. Senator, State Senator Bob Peterson was here. And the topic of conversation was the House bill, which has now moved to the Senate, which this body passed a revolution.
Revolution?
Resolution. We had a revolution, and then we passed a resolution opposing last year. And so, when it went from the House to the Senate, there were some, some quick dealings that sort of actually made it worse than what we opposed. And so, now, the Senate is considering it. I think the upside is that the Senate is, we might have a better opportunity in the Senate for some considerations that maybe would hurt the city as bad. But I think with the representation that we had here, it was very clear that, yes, some, some fixes are needed, but because different cities all apply tax law so differently, an across-the-board fix could really, really adversely affect Chillicothe. So, I encourage this body and the citizens of Chillicothe to pay really close attention to this, because it's the type of thing that frankly, tax law and reform are, is just not that exciting to pay attention to. But this is something that would be right in line with all these other cuts we have. And, you know, one of the things we asked is, hey, you know, if this is necessary, if you have necessary, can you give us something to offset some of the pain? And I would say, Senator Bob Peterson was, I think he was thoughtful to, he asked some good questions, but I think he was thoughtful of the project director, you know, of some of the different, you know, I think that was really effective. It's not a lot of people, but, you know, probably did have a pass. I think it was on the, it was, 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 it was,